I'm going to call this meeting's order, April second. Study session of the Chino Valley Planning and Zoning Commission. Commissioner Zunidio, would you please lead us in the pledge?
My pleasure, ladies.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Looks like everybody is here. So we've done the call order and the pledge. So we're going to move to item C, Planning and Zoning Commission's study session. First item is C A or C one, T A dash twenty, twenty-four dash oh two. Continue discussion regarding potential changes for the regulation of non-domestic.
All right.
I will give it to you.
I'll take you away. So as part of your, well, hold on, before I get into the packet. Based on the last dialogue that we had last study session, a lot of unknowns with where we want to take this as far as quantities, fencing, care, all of the above. We, there was a wide blanket that we touched on. And from that meeting, staff did a lot of research into try to find the, or try to figure out what federal regulations exist. And what we concluded is that they don't exist. They are very specific, personalized to communities. They talk a lot about care, some very basic, you know, what does abuse look like? What is, you know, but they don't ever get into the, you know, one horse per every two thousand square feet kind of stuff. So the next level we went down is into university level studies. And so part of your packet included a couple of studies done by, one done by the University of Minnesota, their extension campus, which tends to work along with either Minnesota State Ag and even federal ag. They had some reference, uh, just casework within there. And then the other article was from the University of New Hampshire, and that was an extension campus as well that partnered with their local ag. Didn't see anything from Arizona as far as U of A. U of A has a pretty decent extension, but they had, didn't have any case studies that I could pull up within this time.
Out west, we're supposed to know how to do that instinctively.
I know, there you go. I did find a couple, or an article from the, it's a veterinary clinic down in the Phoenix area. It's the Foothills Animal Hospital. They did talk about the certain types of horses as far as what you call them at certain ages. They did mention a little bit more about what do they eat? How do you care for them? They had some higher recommendations as far as square footage. So a lot of these articles are really just intended to, one, give you a background if you're not super familiar with horses. And then, two, also show that they are kind of all over the board on how much, how to keep them? What's the minimum square footage? The Phoenix Animal Hospital, they talk about having a horse, one horse at least five thousand square feet, but twenty thousand square feet is ideal. The New Hampshire article is more specific to homesteads, family homesteads, and what you would need to do to be self-sufficient for food alone. So they talk about family dynamic needs of horses and dairy cows, meat cows, your meat chickens, eggs, egg chickens specifically. So there's quite a wide array on there.
But that's like supporting a family with meat and milk and eggs for a year.
So, and a lot of people move here to Chino with the idea that they're going to start up a small homestead. So like, you know, it's really, it's, I want to own a couple of horses and maybe a chicken, you know, that kind of level of stuff that we end up seeing. So really, the intention was to give you a lot of information and then kind of digest it and see where the commission wants to start. Do we want to start looking at, just start with an animal and kind of start going through what we would think for a horse? Do we want to look at what we want to allow as far as the range? You know, are we wanting to have roosters still in Chino Valley? Are we wanting to just keep it to hens? Do we want to look at pigs again? Is one pig per acre, is that still acceptable? So really going to look towards the commission just to kind of start some dialogue on where the tiered off point is going to be.
Now Will and I had a conversation today about really what is the effective area of an acre that's going to be able to be used for animals because it's not the full acre. And so we dealt with that when we did the horse rescues on Fire Sky. And we, because Commissioner Switzer brought up, well, yeah, he's got five acres, but it's not five acres totally dedicated to animals. We have to take off the amount that's actually your house, your barn, your garage.
Your driveway.
Yeah, your front, your setbacks.
And that's an issue too. Are they allowed in front of the property?
Well, and I will tell you that.
I would say no.
That is the correct answer if you're asking a planner.
So that's what I mean, but that's all stuff that.
One of the things I noticed in this descriptive of several of these things is that there's a differentiation between pasture and paddocks and stables.
Yep.
Correct.
And so I would suggest that in Chino Valley, pasturing something is kind of almost impossible just because we don't get enough rain and we don't irrigate anymore to have nice beautiful hayfields like used to be here. And so we might want to keep that in mind, that the idea here for most people is they're not interested in a self-sustaining pastorage system unless you're a rancher. And that we need to look at the parts of it that suggest for the attic or the stabling part where, like this one right here says, plan for at least four hundred square feet for average size, hundred, eleven hundred pound horse. This space would not include space required for shelters, feeders, water sources, and mazons, multiple horses out of the gallery. So four hundred square feet.
That's a two-car garage.
Yeah, that's just not, I mean, that's not a huge area, but for a horse that's in a stable, that's kind of about what you would expect to find. And here in Chino, there's a lot of places that could meet that criteria pretty easily.
But then how much other area should they have for roaming?
Well, there was some other stuff in there.
It's just like the mare motels, a lot of people buy from Tractor Supply and all are twenty by twenty, so that would be four hundred square foot. And it's got a shade over it, which is what a lot of people buy.
That's all the room they get to walk around in. And that's just, we are considering all of those different things when it comes to sizes.
Maybe we should start with an animal first.
Probably good. What are we, okay, so that's a good thought. What are we worried about the most? What, not worried isn't the right word. What are we concerned about the most to carry this discussion forward? What are the things that?
Having too many of animal on the space.
Of not, of particularly any animal, not having too many, not just a horse or a cattle or a pig or a chicken.
You can't discuss horses and chickens, you can't. So we got to start with one animal.
Start with a horse.
And they all need to be addressed, but they should all be in the same code.
So we have this.
What constitutes a ranch versus just acreage? How many acres do you have to, before you're a ranch?
And that's part of where we started. We kind of shotgunned it and then we tried to bring it back in when Lori and I and Jessica were discussing this. It's, you know, we figured this might, talking about active area, I think that is a very important part of this. And then what does that translate to, or how does that end up translating into code when it comes to regulations? We think it would probably be best to obviously discuss or have provisions in there to have the active acreage. So if you have one acre of land and, you know, rule of thumb is that fifty percent of that is actually, is going to be reserved for your live, non-domestic animals. And then.
And your house, and your garage, and your setbacks, all that stuff, the non-useable.
But would that be the minimum requirement?
And that's the other part. It's so, and then minimum, and then what do you do when you have two acres? And then what do you, so there should be a base that we want to try to get to. We think an acre is probably the place to start with that because that's what's going to have the horses, the cat, the larger animals. And then if we need to go to the half acre to talk about, you know, chickens and whatnot, smaller lots, we can handle that. But I, I think the priority would be horses, cattle, shit, oh, the animals essentially. And then we can cut.
Goat and sheep.
There you go, yep.
Everybody got this?
I can pull it up here too.
The very first animal listed is horse. So now where did, is this information?
This is from your vision.
Okay, that's good, thank you. So this is from back east where land is not quite as open as it is here, but that's probably a good place to start because an acre isn't an acre. So it says right here, exercise areas, two hundred square feet pasture area, which we had a little discussion about is one to two acres. Here, I don't think that pasturing is an option. Housing and boundary setback, enclosed ventilated barn or three-sided barn setbacks of fifty feet. Fencing, electric wood rail, woven wire, and one horse per family member. It says family needs, I think that's a little bit subjective, what your need might be, but I don't know how we could tie a population into one horse per family.
And I think, yeah, that's specific to that homestead self-sufficient. You want to be a farmstead, excuse me, yes.
You can even go to the one you had at first.
Before, oh, for the other one, yeah.
That was maybe more specific to our area.
So we don't have that in paper, do we? We just have it up on the screen.
I do, I just have it up on the screen, correct, correct.
Because that gives local counties regulations also.
It does, yes. So we have everything from Chino Valley. So for us, you have a Pi, Coco, Clarkdale, Jerome, Sedona, Camperdy, Preske, Preske Valley, Wickenburg, Pacon.
It's challenging because the title of the columns doesn't scroll. Do we have animal? I don't see horses.
Over here.
Fowl?
Oh, excuse me, no. I'm so sorry.
Horses are fourth over from.
Yeah, we're, Chino's already have one acre minimum for horses. That does exist already?
Correct, correct.
Have to have an acre before you can have a horse in Chino.
And figure out the freeze.
No. One acre minimum.
Perfect.
So you want to start with horses and then?
Yeah, let's just start there.
Just start there, okay. So since, and it is kind of the consistent consensus to look at it based on active area and not just based on parcel? Okay.
Yeah.
So based on, so Chino Valley, we know is unlimited. Feel like I'm missing later columns here.
I don't see horses.
Yeah, it's within the text.
Oh, there it is, okay.
So.
That was Coconino.
Yes, yeah, Coconino, they're one per acre. So one acre minimum for horses that they have to have, you have to have at least one acre of land available. And then it's three horses are livestock on the first acre and then may increase an additional animal for every half acre increment. Cottonwood, you need at least two thou, twenty thousand square feet. A twenty thousand square foot lot and you need.
So that's a half acre, not quite a half.
Correct. And that kind of coincides with the fifty percent if you're going to golf, that rule of thumb of what's available after you're living on the property. Uh, Clarkdale, one acre per two animals. So if you have one acre land, you get two non-domestic.
And that would be tough to even limit it to fifty percent. You know, I'm just thinking of my lot.
Right.
So my house is set pretty far back from my frontage.
Right.
So I don't have a half acre of, I could easily have one horse.
Right.
If not two, and they'd be taken care of and room for barn and feed and all that, but it's probably only forty percent.
Exactly, and so it's going to be across, how they set it up. And, you know, if, we could even tie it down to, you know, if we want one horse to have, I must have tw, uh, twenty thousand square feet of land or ten thousand square feet of land, which, you know, it's four per acre or.
But that's usable for horses.
Correct.
If we're not going to do it that way, then we need to figure that extra space that's not usable into the number of animals and then that would be a lesser.
Because it says cottonwood, the minimum lot size you, to have livestock is point four six acre.
Correct.
Well, it's not even a half an acre.
Including the building, so that's, that's just too small.
Jerome's the same way, which I can see why that is. You had a half an acre lot in Jerome, you'd be king.
So if we keep going through Jerome, Sedona.
Sedona, we don't care about.
All right, let's get it.
Their employees are living in the parking lot.
Camperdy.
Half acre minimum for animals.
Pacon.
What is Wickenburg? We have one acre.
One acre.
And that's a horse town.
Yeah, and they're very similar to Chino.
Yes, it is.
It's unlimited on parcels, one acre greater, commercial horse boarding permitted in all zones. They have some level of setbacks for property lines to corrals. And then they do have regulations within there that couldn't fit all in here, but they talk about your corral space and whatnot. It, they, they do go into that.
So what is, what is the definition, their definition of what a corral is?
Let's pull it up.
That's going to be important that we understand what they're talking about. One guy's corral, another guy's horse.
Now, a lot of people have round pins and they keep their horses locked in a round pin, which is a training area.
They need covered. Enclosed, do they need?
I mean, do we decide that or do we make sure there's enough land available so that they can put those things?
Well, that's, yeah, but we have to understand, like they're calling out for a corral, we need to know what they think a corral is and maybe it's got a specific size, maybe it doesn't, I don't know.
For curiosity, did you look at any HOAs that allow horses?
We didn't dig into individual HOA, CCRs.
They're usually quite strict. So just to let you know what ours is, certain lots are allowed livestock, horses. And they're all eight, one acre lots, they would, they allow two horses.
Okay.
Maximal, or one. And, you know, you can have chickens, but I don't think the corn, chickens. Usually HOAs are pretty strict.
Did you go to chapter seven?
Yes, um, I believe that's where we are right now. Sorry, I did, we did the research on this, this, for this one a while ago, so it's taking me a little bit to get back into.
It's fourteen was zoning, seven was animals.
Lori, I just needed you to look at it.
I don't know if it's going to have what you want.
They did, um.
There was A, something about maintenance of animals. Maintenance of dairy.
Whenever we went through this, they had a very clean table on what was allowed. And it looks like they've changed over.
No goats, no roosters, no chickens. Oh, at large.
Yeah.
How are chickens?
At large.
At large, at large, yeah. Horses in town streets, housing. I apologize for doing this one.
Yeah, you tried searching, didn't you?
Yeah, I did, it was a text search to see if it's in there's only.
And it just says you can't have your horse over your, over your well.
For house customer accessory buildings.
Okay.
Twelve hundred square feet.
And then there's horse, you know, funky lots. I can think of one specifically in the corner.
Cross, E three.
Yes.
One south, Molly Ray.
Okay.
That newer house, it's kind of a flag lot, but they.
But their setbacks are.
Yeah, there's no waste of the house on the lot, he has no backyard.
Well, so not, so not contain at least twelve hundred square feet.
Big side yard and a huge front.
So for south, we need twelve hundred square feet.
Be allowed to put a horse there.
Well, their corral is twelve hundred square feet.
Correct.
I don't know if Molly Ray.
If the horse is allowed to have free turnout, otherwise it's a minimum of four hundred.
So their setbacks for accessory buildings are the same as the front lot setbacks?
Yep. And then they talk about four feet for the corrals.
Except the bill, accessory building smaller than a hundred and forty-four square feet may be installed on the property without needing that requirement.
So Will and I have dealt with code enforcement issues with neighbors that put their animals like four feet away as opposed to the distance of your primary building, which would be at least ten. And there's issues with that, especially if they're not maintaining their animals. So the closer you get to the neighbor, the more, more complaints we're going to be getting.
You know, that's a very good point. Because I mean, where they, they're able to go, their exercise area that a lot of the articles refer to, that's not really where we want the setback to be, but it's where you're keeping them, you're penning them, where they're going to be doing most of their, their pooping and peeing and eating, that they're going to be, make sure that that's less impactful for everybody. You know, so Wickenburg, they talked about, you know, they, twelve hundred square feet for each horse kept therein and should corral have a direct access to turnout area, they need at least four hundred square feet. They don't talk about how much turnout area, but they do have minimum standards on keeping at least. So I mean, you're, you're obviously going to be restricted that if you don't have a, a turnout area, you have to have twelve hundred square feet per horse, so.
Yeah, so they're saying the corral is four hundred square feet.
Yeah, if you have a turnout, yeah.
So well, ones that currently don't fit that would be grandfathered in, so they'll be okay?
Well, they would have to kind of.
We have to have that discussion.
I'm going to suggest this just from observation of all these years sitting on the floor that that's going to be a real priority. There's people that have been here for way long time and.
And barns are expensive and for do.
See one, one to work all the time, there's like five horses, and you're just in that pen, which is fine, but there's no, they run around in a room. I feel bad for them, it's like, you know, take care of them the proper way.
So do you guys feel that if we followed Wickenburg on what the minimum without a turnout, is twelve hundred enough for a horse? Are you comfortable with that?
That's each horse.
For each horse.
I want a horse before you go down there.
Yeah.
I, I think we should not focus just on Wickenburg. I think we need to look at, I, I feel like we're getting way in the weeds. I think we need to back up just a little bit and look at lot sizes as opposed to. I, I'm uncomfortable regulating corrals and.
Well, we need to, I'm, I'm not interested in regulating the corral. What I'm trying to figure out is the different.
What do they need?
The sizes that people are recommending for any of this livestock, cows, horses, and chickens is all over the map.
Yes.
So the reason I wanted to go here with this corral is what are they saying a corral is? Well, it's, it's kind of a little bit ambiguous. The corral area cannot.
Yeah, the definition.
Shall contain at least twelve hundred square feet of area for each horse kept therein. So the corral area.
We're going to go looking definitions.
Have direct access to turnout area, the corral shall be a minimum of four hundred square feet.
Yeah, but like you say, I don't even know if we need to regulate accessory stuff, just.
No, I agree, but we need to know.
The corral area shall contain a minimum of.
Melissa, for the definition of corral.
Four hundred square feet.
I, I think we will need to say something.
If you go to definitions.
It's stated in that last sentence.
Correct. And then you have to say.
Minimum of four hundred.
A stable, you need a covered area because I've seen it where middle of there are two horses.
It's only mentioned in this section.
Do not have co, there's a.
I know. And Chino's do not have covered.
Both similar methodologies in the Hampshire study.
Yeah, correct. Do you have your studies?
And then, I mean, right on one south, they've got, or six horses and they had no cover for many years. And now they've just got something, those one stall tart and, you know, bad weather, those don't do anything. They're, they're open, four sides, but that's a whole different thing. Like you say, we start with the basics. Want to just cut to the chase and say, you know, two houses per acre as long as the structures don't consume more than, you know, the house is no larger than.
You already have the lot coverage in the zoning for your houses, we do.
It's a lot of coverage on there.
A lot of coverage.
But it's based on the square, it's based on the size of the lot.
So how much, how much area can you cover on an acre?
Like fifty percent?
You have, you have an acre.
Yeah.
You have an acre and then you have a percentage of it that is for your house.
Correct, up to fifty percent.
Right, and so that's what you have to use because somebody could build a house that big.
So you, you know.
So, so right away, you're, right away, we're looking at, and then when you say, okay, do we want to put it over the septic system? Do we want to count the driveway? You know, and at that point, we're down to twenty thousand square feet usable.
Which would be one horse.
Right. Well, but you, you can't say, oh, I'm only going to have a small house. You have to say, the zoning says you can have fifty percent. And therefore, your coverage is fifty percent.
You can have one if you're the max, you have the max though, but you can have two if your house is already constructed and it only covers twenty percent.
And, and then I come in wanting in addition and you say you can't have it because you have two horses.
Could be.
Right, and that's a problem.
And, and then you say, okay, we have SR one and SR one H if you have a horse. And we have all sorts of different zonings for acre.
Like you would lose it, and then we're trying to enforce that and it just becomes bureaucracy.
It's, I, I just think we need a standard.
I'm under the KISS principle.
Even though everybody might not fit that standard, we need to have a standard for what's usable.
One horse per acre.
Yeah, and I don't think that's what we.
They're herd animals, they should be one by themselves because then they just pace, looking for something else.
Their buddy, yeah.
Correct, but then on the flip, he's just saying that if you go by the zoning standards, two would be too many for one. So which one is it?
Well, one per thousand.
Are we married with the fact that it's twenty thousand square feet for a horse? Or can we say two for twenty thousand square feet and say every ten thousand square feet, you get a horse?
Well, right there in that corral area, is twelve hundred square feet. So what they're kind of saying right there is twelve hundred square feet is okay.
If they kept it in the corral.
For each horse.
For a horse.
But that's just covering.
So twenty thousand would be almost eight horses.
I'm, I'm not trying for us to define the corral. I'm using a corral as a standard that says if it's okay for a horse to be in a corral of twelve hundred square feet, then maybe it's okay for the horse to be on the property. If it's okay for a horse to be in a corral of twelve hundred square feet, then maybe it's okay for the horse to be on the property in twelve hundred square feet. And maybe that's too small, but that's a starting place to go. I don't care about the corral, I care about the square foot. Somebody else want my job? This is gonna be.
Well, I mean, that's why I would think it just simply, just say two horses per acre.
To start with, and I wanna be really clear here because. The word is gonna be out about what we're talking about here is that we're gonna say things and set some of its standards that are gonna be, in my opinion, completely open to public discussion. But takes two years to do it, hopefully not, but. We wanna give everybody a chance to speak because every person is gonna have an opinion on horses and cows and that stuff, whether they have any of them or not. And so, but we need to talk this out.
A lot of them will have an opinion, they're gonna get every opinion.
And then, then you go to.
But by giving you a fair chance to discuss it within limitations, I'm not gonna spend three years doing this. Then we can um, say we've done our due diligence and these are the standards that we've come up with and by listening to everybody, we're gonna get a feel for what.
And based off s- standards.
Right.
Uh, state standards or county standards.
We need to look at all these different standards and come up with something that fits Chino Valley and the standards can be, be dictated partially by the citizens. Partially by Wickenburg, partially by New Hampshire. Because going into it without some baseline and some thing to stand on, it's just gonna be a free for all and we don't need that.
And then the question goes to, do we have to? Define and go into a zoning for like boarding facilities? And rest, like we already have the one for the rescue, I know there's three or four other rescues in town and they've got, you know, open areas with livestock and then the account amounts change. So do we open that up to where we start having a zoning description? For CP, CUP or whatever, for boarding facilities or s-
Yeah, so with a lot of those. So with boarding facilities, they're specifically called out in Ag five or four and up. Um, so a lot of those existing are an outright use. So we, we already have some level of provision in there for those uses. And I believe there's an article um, that I included in here from the American Association of Equine that talked about regulations care for senior horses in, you know, in those facilities or the, of the rescues. So um, on the screen right now is, is at one point in time, this was a potential recommendation from uh, staff to counsel when this was first brought up. And at that point in time for horses, we had that recommended at one horse per every half acre, but you have to have at least one acre of land.
So that's fifty percent of the lot, which, that makes sense, that makes sense.
Yeah.
And that's two per acre.
It's common, it's pretty, and it fits in with other towns in the county and.
So that would be for um, all of the SR districts from SR one to SR two and a half? Once you got into the AR four, AR five, I don't have AR thirty-six on here. Um, there is no limit, but you needed um, a minimum acreage, but, so that was at that time, you have an ag property. Don't know if that's still, you wanna distinctly do that, split them out or keep it at one per acre and just leave it?
Well, so it's kinda like the storage shit thing, we can maybe have some provision for. More storage shows if you got bigger property.
Right.
Right.
Cause your house is only gonna soak up so much dirt and then the rest of it's nothing to happen.
Well, and the bigger the lot, the smaller percentage your house takes up.
Right, exactly, so the, so the opportunity space wise expands by the acres that you have. Cause your house is only gonna eat up so much territory.
And then does it matter? Species, so in other words. One horse, uh, if you have one acre, one horse, one cow, or two horses and two cows, or?
Mm, cows are a different animal.
Right, so how do you?
In terms of, in terms of complaints, that's where we get our complaints.
I know, but that means it's, we're not gonna separate cows and horses, we're gonna say.
It's a big animal.
You can either have two horses, you can either have two cows or one each.
I don't, no, no, that isn't what it says.
We want two cows.
I know, that's what it is.
No, no, the cows, the cows are saying, one cow per acre, minimum one acre.
So right now, we have one cow per acre, I mean, this is the old one. Yeah.
And the horses are saying, one horse per half acre.
Correct, so that means you could have one cow and two horses.
So you can have more horses than cows.
No.
Unless we wanna do both of it.
They can't count the acre twice.
Oh, oh, he's, so we're looking at different species.
Oh.
You're saying cumulatively.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so can.
Well, yeah, well.
You have to have the acres, you gotta.
If you have two acres.
Yeah, then.
Two acres, well then you have two horses and a cow.
But.
But you have to have two acres.
Yeah.
Is, is it going to be, if it's one cow per acre? And it's two horses per acre, one horse a half acre, that acre is still just one acre. So does he gotta get one cow or two horses? And can he have both, which means three acres.
Well, yeah, cause it's one horse per half acre.
Right, I get it, but, but is that what, is that where we're heading?
That would make it an acre and a half.
Yeah.
So it's either accumulation of all of the above, or you can only, or once the acre is counted towards horses or cows, then you can't count that for future animals.
Okay, so and that, it makes sense because. If you have somebody that wants to have this homestead, which means horse, dairy cow, meat cow, laying hens, meat chickens. By the time you get done, there's no place for anybody to walk because you've accumulated all these animals. So in my opinion, what I see here is you get one cow an acre or two horses per acre or one horse half acre, not all of that. You have to make a choice, are you raising cows or are you raising horses?
I agree, that's what I wanted to just.
Yeah, no, exactly.
I, I know, but I, I really wonder, do we really have to split it so fine to say you can't count the same acre twice?
As long as the public understands that.
And then, then you get all these guys that are rovers and want so many cows with their one horse so they can row.
Well, that's, that's just it. There's gonna be somebody out there.
We could word it.
That's why I just say that, that could be, that could be determined.
And they use cows, and when they get big, they give rid of them and give another little cow.
I want you to listen to everybody here, we all get along well.
It's just gonna have to be spelled out very specific.
And, and we can't, you're gonna have to say you can't have an aggregate of more than bang, whatever that turns out to be.
So many hooves.
Yeah. I mean, I would have.
Maybe, maybe even give them an example that you have to have, if you want two cows, if you want two horses and a cow, you need two acres.
Correct. Just as long as it's spelled out, but then you run into, okay, I've got one acre.
Yeah.
I've got two horses, okay?
Okay.
Now I have twenty chickens. And I have three sheep and four goats. I can have it according to that.
Because that's exactly where it was going earlier.
It says property instead of acre.
No limit.
Oh, that's right, it's ghosted. You have to, have to bear with me, my eyes are not.
That's okay.
This was a talking point at council, and that was the very first thing.
And this was just the topic, yeah.
And usually they run them together. But it's not like you got a separate pen, they usually are always in the same area.
You'd have to dress all of that, you can't, you can't stack these animals. Two horses is fine, but then.
There's an aggregate, there's an aggregate amount of stuff that's gonna set a limit, otherwise. It won't, it won't be.
All right, well, then, then we, then we can't say no limit, we have to sit there and say, okay, here we go.
But then there's gonna be, if you have this, you can have this, if you don't.
Depending on. So, we'll be looking at that, what this says is, if you're gonna have chickens and you got two point five acres, you can have all the chickens you want. If you're gonna have sheep and goats, two point five acres, no limit. If you're gonna have a swine, you can have one per acre, meaning two swine.
And then again, you can't add in the horses.
Exactly, okay, if you're going to have a cow, you, you, there's going to have to be something that says you can only have three chickens and two goats and no pigs. To do that, you see where we're, it's just, that's what it has to be that way, but we're gonna get.
So confusing in compounds.
We can come up with an equivalent animal unit.
Point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that, and that may be like a chicken is a, is an eighth of an animal unit, a horse is one animal.
Correct. Correct.
And that would be the way to do that, so and you get an aggregate, on this acre, you're gonna get an aggregate count of animal units of two.
Right, and you pick whether it's goats or chickens or horses.
Or. Or maybe you could. Yeah. I was gonna say, you could even go with, if you have a cow or chick, if you have a cow or horse, you could even, then you revert to the SR.
So you say cow is one.
Twelve, twenty-four, you can have four hens and no sheep and goats or swine, if you have a cow or a horse.
At some point.
This is not really an issue.
No.
At some point, no matter how small of a property.
You probably shouldn't have cow and sheep.
A chicken don't take up that much room.
Especially when you eat it.
Yeah, if you get too crowded, you have chickens.
And they usually all run together anyway, so.
But you can kinda see in this little bit of process here, how we have to be very diligent and we have to be. Methodical, and we gotta listen to everybody that's got something to say, whether we're gonna implement anything they say, we have to give them a chance. But I like the animal unit thing, that's a kid, that's a kid's start.
So I'm already working on some ideas for.
That's gonna make more sense. Yeah, there you go, you address ranches there, all zones forty acres and above are exempted.
Right.
Yep.
So that'd be a ranch.
And then, just like with the conics boxes, we have the little exception that if there is a case where you can say, I can have five horses on this, two acres, and I can show you how I can do it and run through that, awesome.
Well, then that's where nobody should really get upset, cause you can always apply for a CUP, and if you've got the right criteria, then it can happen.
Exactly, we're not, we're not saying you can't get there.
Yeah, right.
We just gotta go through this process, because through this process, if you're gonna step out of the box. And you gotta go through this process, if you wanna stay in the box, you're the process.
And what's great about the public process is that we will notify all the neighbors, so if they have issues or concerns, they can be addressed at the meeting.
That sounds really good, right?
All right, yeah, no, I think so, as far as large animals, I, I think that's a great way to take it forward. Um, if we could just talk a little bit on um, birds.
What about sheep and goats?
Sheep, oh, okay, so sheep, let's, we can start there first too. Um, so I mean, we can easily get the point system set up on this, if we. Trying to think.
I don't wanna call it a point system.
Sorry, animal credit, what did you call it, an animal unit?
Yeah.
Okay.
Animal unit, that's.
Yeah.
So on the animal units. Sheep and hen, or sheep and um, goats.
Half a horse.
The counties, let's say that again.
Half a horse.
Half a horse, all right, okay.
Well, that's exactly where we're going.
Yeah, okay.
So a horse, all right, so does everybody agree a horse is an animal unit?
Yes.
Yes.
A horse or a cow?
No, no, you have to use, you have to use a cow.
A cow is the largest.
That's the biggest acre, so a cow is an animal unit.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's the biggest.
And then, that, that equates to an acre.
Yeah. Yes.
And a swine is equal to a cow.
Because.
Because, because we already have one acre for a swine.
Correct.
And so then if you look at hens.
No, no, go down.
You, you jumped way over horses.
A horse is a half unit.
Let's go down the ladder.
Yeah, let's go down the ladder, okay.
What's the horse gonna be?
So it's a half unit.
Horse is a, horse is a.
Half.
Horse is a half of unit.
It is half a unit.
So that puts the sheep and goats at a quarter acre.
A quarter acre.
And hens at an eighth acre.
That sounds good.
If you, if you've got, if you could have four hens on the court. How many square, what's a quarter acre?
Ten thousand.
Twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand square feet, you can have four hens, so for three thousand, we're gonna have a hen for every three thousand square feet, that seems a bit.
Well, even, even.
They're usually kept in a coop or with, with a.
Right.
Yeah, and.
Even your SR uh, zero point one six, you can have four.
So that's, so where I'm going with this is we need to decide, a hen is not an eighth of an animal unit, it's more like a thirty second of an animal.
Sixteen.
Actually sixteen.
Sixteen.
Cause four per a quarter would be sixteen on an acre.
If, if you.
Well, then you could have thirty, then you could have thirty-two on an acre, that's about.
No, you could have sixteen on an acre.
Oh, sixteen, sixteen.
But that's not very many chickens on an acre.
But that's, that's, that's six thousand square feet.
Yeah, that's too much, we, we need to make them a thirty second of a unit.
Okay, well then if you do that, you're going to say. Two, two of them, two of them for, for the SR zero point one six, you'd have two of them.
That's okay.
And then you have.
Have to have foul now, I mean, right now, this isn't even a.
I, I know.
The point oh one six should probably not even be allowed.
Yeah, there are a lot of urban areas on smaller lots that people are allowed to have three chickens.
In Prescott Valley, my daughter has chickens.
And it's really not an issue.
It's a, it's a new, new.
Point one six is a small. They're not allowed, they're not allowed to have roosters.
Yeah, that's like a seven thousand square foot lot.
Yeah.
No roosters, but a couple, three laying hens, not a big deal.
No, I, I would agree with that.
I would say two at that. Then you could work it out proportionally.
I just didn't know if hens needed to have more than two.
I don't think so, but.
How would it work?
Two hens.
I had two.
Does it work for two?
Until somebody gets eaten.
Who would do that?
And then it runs around and screams, cause it's by itself.
If, if, if you're gonna have chickens, you normally after two or three years, you get, so chicks.
It's called chicken math.
Yeah.
Is that like buddy math?
Because as they get older, they, they don't lay as much.
Yeah, there's a certain point where you stop counting individuals and you count breeds, cause you have the Americanas and you have the Longhorns and you have the Rhode Island Reds in the top.
Yeah.
After a while, you stop counting individuals and you just can't have any breeds of chickens.
You have, you have the Plymouth Rock.
That's called, yeah, that's called chicken math, yeah, when you, you convert from individuals to breeds.
But usually what happens is you get the chick. And their first season, after they start laying, their first season after they start laying, they don't molt. But the season after that, they do, and then when they molt, they don't give you any eggs.
Yeah, they just eat a lot.
Well, yeah. So there's a, there's, there's a little bit of work with it.
So do we agree a chicken is like a thirty second of an animal unit?
Yes.
So does that equal um, two or three for a seven thousand square foot lot?
I don't care.
Whoa.
Whatever you.
Chicken is one thirty second of an animal unit.
All right, all right. It would equate to two.
Two, yeah. I mean, we gotta kinda go that route or we're gonna get hung up here for three days with chickens.
I, I think it would equate to two, let, let's use two for SR sixteen, we can use two.
Okay. Perfect.
Yeah.
And then for the twelve, we can use four, and for the SR twenty-four hundred, we can use.
Six.
A thirty second, one thirty second of an animal.
Eight, I think.
For anything here.
And then just, you know.
Go up from there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Turkeys.
Perhaps this sounds like the storage unit thing.
Turkeys.
Have, one turkey equals two chickens.
Turkey equals two, so one sixteen?
Turkeys are a whole lot bigger and a whole lot noisier.
One turkey might equal four chickens.
There you go.
One turkey might equal four chickens.
I would say.
At least four.
Okay.
Just physically in size, that would be appropriate.
And if someone, and if someone screams, we know who to point to.
We need to have turkeys listed and geese.
Yeah.
And.
Cause I know people that have them.
Yeah.
And I, I know people that have ducks.
And ducks.
Okay.
Ducks and chickens are about.
If you're gonna go down this road, peacocks.
They have, they're already all here.
What do we do with the wild peacocks on them?
I think we do nothing with those, but maybe we don't let new ones come in.
They are loud.
Because the loudness is what makes, I know we're rural, but it's also about being, trying to be compatible with your neighbors.
What if they didn't sound like a kid getting strangled?
That's a rooster.
No. Peacocks sound like.
Oh, I know, I live, they have them in urban LA.
As long as we're on chickens.
I get it.
Would it just be one chicken per acre? I mean, one rooster?
Or do we wanna say only roosters and ag? Do we wanna say?
Or roosters that are fixed.
Cause a ton of people have roosters and they protect the hens, so they're kind of necessary for a lot of people.
And if you're raising baby chicks, you need a boy.
So, can we go with the smaller property sizes like the SRs? Zero point six and.
Yeah, twelve and twenty-four.
No. No, no roosters or silenced roosters?
Silenced roosters, there you go.
Okay.
Roosters are great if they're, if you can't hear them.
And, and who's going to verify if they've silenced?
Well, you know what? Your neighbor will be calling us and we will do code enforcement against you. That's how we find out.
They know they muted roosters.
Yeah, they do.
And then on the, on an acre, you can have one noisy rooster or as many silent roosters as you want.
I'm not sure one acre is big enough.
One thirty second of a chicken.
I'm not sure one acre is big enough for a noisy rooster.
We've got, got my neighborhood six, seven roosters?
And they start at three AM.
Yeah, they do.
They don't bother me a bit.
I like them, but I've had one.
I have a neighbor who let his rooster run all around and he liked to crow right under my window.
Now, that I wouldn't like.
That puts a stop to that.
If you've ever been to Kawhi, you know about roosters.
I think we should have one noisy rooster an acre.
Okay.
If you want more than that.
Contained, contained.
Contained.
Contained. If you want more than that, you can have them silenced.
Thank you.
Okay.
No, no free rein.
The one thirty second chickens, their animal unit.
Yeah, a rooster chicken or a hen chicken is the same animal to count.
If it's silenced, yes.
Yeah, and if it's silenced, and if not, a rooster gets counted as a rooster, one for, one for the acre, one for the one point six, two for the two and two for the two and a half, and then after that, you jump up into the AR four and five. You can have one rooster per acre.
Cool.
Noisy rooster.
Noisy.
You can have silenced roosters all you can see.
Cause, I, I, a silent rooster equals a hen.
They also have a bird caller.
Yes.
Like a bark caller, yeah.
If you can't, if they can't expand that air sack, they can't grow.
I had a buddy that got chicks and he was supposed to get only like a certain percentage of
They can't, they can't, they can't tell the difference.
They came fifty fifty and so.
Wow.
We had chicken dinners for a while.
They can't tell the difference when they're that young. And, and it used, it used to be that they knew how to castrate roosters, but nobody knows how they do it anymore.
I have that as the same as.
And when they were on the farm and they hurt the roosters, they.
And you have church information? Okay.
And they would become capons and they would get larger.
I'll just touch bases with them and just make sure.
And they would get larger and that's what they would sell for the chickens, for the, for the meals.
So quantities, do we wanna talk at all on setbacks or corrals or anything like that?
We'll go there. Let's get the animal unit thing figured out first.
Done, then I will rest. I think that's all I've got for that. It's enough for me to get in trouble.
Okay, so we covered chickens, cows and horses. We got other animals to cover.
We did roosters, cows, horses, sheep. Sheep and goats are a quarter unit.
Yep.
Hens are one thirty second, a silent rooster is a one thirty second, a noisy rooster is a one, um.
Duck, geese I had is the same as a turkey, which is one eighth of an animal unit.
Yep.
Okay.
Ducks.
Or a duck.
Duck is more like a chicken.
Okay.
Turkey equals one eighth.
Duck, you wanna go one sixteenth?
Ducks can be noisy, too.
They can be, yeah, and they, they're super poopy. But they're cute.
They're cute, so give them more.
That tastes pretty good, too.
Yeah.
So what do we wanna do, do with ducks? Is that the only one that's missing? Is ducks?
Right now. Ducks and then peacocks, if I'm sure.
What do you think of the ducks?
I cannot recommend those as a.
Geese and ducks are, are we, are these together?
They're almost identical.
Ducks and chickens.
Both are geese and chickens.
You're gonna, you're gonna have ducks and chickens be the same?
Yeah.
Ducks equal chickens.
Got it.
Okay.
Peacock, are we?
One pig is an animal unit.
No new pig.
No new peacocks, so peacock, peacocks out.
Or silenced peacock.
Okay.
No new noisy peacocks.
None of these are allowed to free range.
Thank you.
Oh, come on, Henry thrives on them free range.
You'll get a lot of complaints on that because people that are into organic farming and organic eggs have to be free range.
So I guess the.
Well, as long as they stay on their property, they can free range.
They can be, they can have, they can have their feathers cut and they can't go for.
Well, he's talking about free range meaning off of the owner's property.
Correct.
Oh.
Then the noisy roosters need to be contained because they'll find their way to somebody else's property and be obnoxious. So, the noisy thing.
They'll find your window.
Contained within their.
They'll find your window.
They will find my window. I'll have to run out in my nightgown with my hose trying to get it.
Maybe we need to, um, define free range as, free range means on the owner's property.
Contained to the owner's property.
Yes.
Okay.
Contained, there you go. Alright, so do we get goats covered and sheep?
Yep, sheep are the same as goats.
Which are what?
A quarter.
Okay, makes sense.
So just to re, we'll recap here from the top. One animal unit is a cow or a swine. Those are both the same. A horse is half an animal unit. Sheep and goat are a quarter. Under, for turkeys and geese, they're at an eighth. We have birds, which includes hen, chickens, silenced roosters, ducks at one thirty second. And then it's roosters, one per property. Peacocks either no go or they have to be silenced, and is that one per property?
A rooster is one per acre.
One per acre.
Per acre, excuse me, yes.
And the peacock should be the same as geese. They're, cause they're similar in size.
Okay.
Oh, geese are at one eighth. Are, are these silenced?
They have to be silenced, yes.
Yeah, silenced.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
And, so that's what I got there. So the peacock, the change with that, one, peacock equals an eighth. And they must be silenced.
If they're not silenced, you can say one acre.
A peacock?
I'm just.
Oh, okay, so let's.
I'm just throwing it out there as.
And that's a good point, so let's talk about that for a second. Is a rooster and a peacock one more noisier than the other?
Yes.
I would say a peacock's noisier.
Yeah, I would.
They go all day long.
Okay, now what about guinea hens?
Oh, are those like chickens?
Yeah, but they're noisier than a chicken.
Guinea, guinea hens are very feral. They don't stay cooped. They don't.
Don't have.
They don't roost at night. They, you know.
We gotta have something.
If the skunk comes by or coyote comes by, they'll, they set off an alarm. Guinea hens are very territorial though. They're very noisy if something comes on your property at night, which we have a lot of around here. I've had guinea hens.
So we need to set a spec on them, cause they blow them.
Are they big?
Uh, they're about the size. They're a little bigger than a chicken.
Chicken size. They look like the helmets that the Germans used to wear. Round and come to a point on the butt.
Treat them like a turkey, an eath?
Yeah.
Yep.
And another thing is.
You gotta keep wings clipped.
If you got an acre, you should be able to make a little bit of noise. Okay, so, I'm gonna go back to my tip.
Yes.
In the general plan, it says we are a rural community. Not a city, not a town.
I get it.
We're a rural community with an agricultural background.
I get it.
Livestock background, so we need to make some accommodations to match our general plan, and if it's a little bit noisy, you move to Gino Valley for a reason. That's, that's what I.
And this is.
This is like the bad roads. You move here knowing the roads are gonna be no good. Don't complain about them unless you wanna vote in.
I mean, they're, they're all written in here.
Okay.
If you don't like it, move to the break.
So will donkey be the same as a horse, too?
Excluding anything.
Right.
So.
A donkey and a horse?
Yeah, donkey and a horse is the same.
You mean baby donkeys? Small, mini ones?
Yeah, because they're.
You have a whole bunch of those by everywhere.
They, they're, they're gonna tear up more corral than a horse will, so let's just make them horse.
Does anyone have miniature horses?
Yeah, they're still a horse.
Yeah.
They're still a horse.
Yeah. DNA says it's a horse.
Okay. Is there anything else we're missing that you guys want in here?
Pardon?
Rabbits?
Rabbits are a good one.
That's a good one.
Okay.
Domestic rabbits, but they're kinda like a dog or a cat.
Yeah.
They're usually, they're always caged.
Normally, normally rabbits are caged.
Or that could be a thirty second, I mean, they.
Chicken.
That's a good, that's a good starting point there.
Rabbit.
Hamsters, gerbils.
Some people breed them.
Yep.
Yeah, I know people that have them for food.
Any pigs?
They sell hamsters, gerbils.
Most people don't put those outside, though.
They sell them at all.
Okay, so we kinda got it and we can.
What about white mice?
Only in labs.
Ask food. Rock my cat. So we can, this isn't an all inclusive list, and when you come to the table with another animal, there's gonna be a criteria to judge.
Yep.
What size that, what, how many animal units that animal is.
How big there and how noisy there.
So the way the zoning code works is if it's not listed, it's not permitted. So if somebody comes in with another type of an animal, we'll have to do a text amendment.
And that's okay.
And it goes through a public process and.
Oh, ostriches and emus.
Yeah, you might as well add it in my neighborhood.
Yep, ostriches and emus.
Llamas, llamas and alpacas.
I would.
Alpacas.
Yeah, they'll.
They're goats.
More like goats.
An emu, I would say is.
An emu is.
They're pretty quiet. I mean, they don't, he doesn't make much noise.
No, but they're a size, I'm looking at the size of them.
Yeah, they're big.
They're big, but he's very.
So maybe we go, maybe we treat them like a, um, like a sheep.
Horse. Sheep?
Yeah.
An emu?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sheep, emus, ostriches, alpacas, llamas.
Like sheep and goats.
All those are a quarter?
Or are they somewhere between sheep and horse?
Plus, I don't think anybody would have more than four.
Yeah.
I'm just.
I'm naked.
Since we're, if we're considering a horse and a donkey at a half, um, llamas and alpaca, I mean, they're, they're similar.
In size.
In size. Lump them in with that?
With horses?
Yeah.
Yeah, alpacas, I would.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know, like two?
No, I think, I think they need to be like a sheep or a goat.
Okay, we'll just round it at a fourth.
We'll, um, come back with this.
Yeah.
Table. And then let you guys have another look at it because after you see it all written out, you might go, ooh, that really doesn't work there.
Well, I agree. But I mean, this is the process. It's gonna.
Yeah.
So any other animals anybody can think of that we haven't covered?
Zebras.
It's horses in valley, yeah.
Horse.
Horse.
But then they have to go and get special permits to have those things, so.
Okay, let's move on.
Alright, so the next item is the general plan and you guys brought your spiral bind. So what I did in that was I pulled together and labeled, if you haven't come back in, we will take your document today. We will put tags on it and there's other pages that we'll put in there. We'll take that today. So, what I wanted to share with you is we have these five elements and each of the five elements has a list of goals and policies and then there's an, there's an implementation tool at the end. This is for us primarily in planning and zoning, but other departments in the town, this is our workbook for the next ten years.
Yep.
This is what we're going to be doing. This is how we get to that place that this makes Chino be Chino. So I wanted to share with you the things that we are working on. So in land use, what I have put in the budget for development services is, um, money for a consultant to help us rewrite the entire zoning code. Now, there's gonna be sections in the code that we have just done. We're gonna keep those. But they, the UDO, which is Uni- Unified Development Ordinance, is not going to be that. It's gonna go back to being a zoning code. We need to take out of there the public works things because what it does is it puts the requirement for making decisions about engineering things on me and I don't have an engineering degree.
That should be on the town engineer.
Thank you. And it, the way it is in the UDO makes it my decision.
Okay, so we need to, and that, that person or company we're gonna hire is gonna be able to sift all that out of there.
And they're gonna organize it better for us and they'll help us identify internal inconsistencies and there are many.
Yep.
There are definitions that are sorely lacking and there's definitions that are crazy.
Rural subdivision.
Seriously. We will also be looking at adding zoning districts because currently we don't have enough for our residential and they aren't specific enough. So one of the things that we have done is we, uh, put an APB out and asked people that were interested in working with us on the zoning code update, and we have several people in this group, Vice Chair and Commissioner Penn is two of the ten people that volunteered for this group and next, this month, oh my gosh. This month, we start meeting with them and we'll talk about districts and what do districts look like and what kinds of uses need to be in districts, and they're gonna help us shape what that looks like and hopefully the budget will pass. And then in early fall, I'll be able to bring someone on that can make magic out of the stuff that the group and the planners decide. We'll be coming to you, um.
Are we gonna be doing it in sections instead of all at once?
Um, I will need to see what they think is the best way to go about doing that.
Because approving the whole code all at one time is pretty intimidating.
We will see where we go with that. I'll let you know. I'll, I'll keep you updated, but I wanted to let you know that that is like the very first thing in this general plan is, hey, do something with your code. We're gonna be doing something with their code and it's gonna be big.
It's, and it's so necessary.
Yeah.
Well, that'd be nice.
All I've been involved in since I've been on this board is cleaning up.
Thank you.
That's a huge.
Yes.
chore.
Yes.
That's why I'll take. That's why I'll take.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what they specialize in.
Absolutely.
That'll be easy for them.
It will be easier for them because they do it and they know what they need to do. And it's easier for them to come in here and tell people that sit up there, this is important and this is why. And they're more readily believed than staff.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just the way it works.
They view the staff as having the best of interests.
Which we don't, we just wanna do what's right for the town.
It's a joint effort with staff.
Absolutely.
They're not gonna get a free rein.
No, 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 no.
Very similar to the general plan process, it'll be hand in hand.
So I wanted you to know that that covers a number of things in the land use element. We, I also put in there, is it in this one? One of the things is that each of the multi-use centers, and we have five or six of them, those are the purple places in the general plan, mostly on eighty-nine, but then we have Old Home Manor. And each one of those needs to have a, a specific land use mix and site design and characteristics and purpose and goals. And something that identifies it as its, as its own special place, either by colors or by, horseshoes or whatever it is that is that unique area. And so I also put in the budget for us to have a consultant help us do one. And that will give us, yes. And so if they can give us one, then we know what we need to do on all the others.
So that does like the intensity so that you can work it out.
Absolutely. So those are really important things for us to be doing. And there, like I said, there's a lot of stuff scattered throughout the goals and policies that fit right into that zoning code that we're gonna be updating. In Parks and Recreation, the Community Services Director put in her budget to develop a Parks, Trails and Open Space Master Plan. So if that gets approved in the budget, that's like the very first thing in the Parks, Trails, Parks, Recreation and Natural Resource Element. So you get the base in and then you can start doing the implementations of. Cause everybody's talking about pickleballs, pickleball, pickleball, where do we put them? We don't know, cause we don't have a plan. So we get a plan in place, then we can start doing the things that implement that. So that is in the budget. I talked with Frank about a stormwater master plan. He said with his integrated water master plan, there's a section of that that covers the stormwater master plan, so that's.
That's a big deal.
It's huge. And that's, um, we started that not very long ago.
Yeah, it was about the same time they started.
So are we, do we want what stormwater to go to the recite? To reclaim or do you want it not reclaimed?
But this was, we'll certainly deal with flooding and flood hazards. And you guys will see what that looks like. Cause we'll have Frank make presentations.
She asked a good question. Are we, is the goal to reclaim it or just?
I don't know that answer because that's in Public Works and that's the engineers thing. I can tell you all about land use. Frank will tell you all about this.
Yeah, cause there's, say, we love to save the water, but you've got everybody with their weed spray and.
I think that there are provisions in the general plan that talk about reclaiming water.
We did have a discussion about reclaiming that water and I think it's awesome.
It's really too bad that this wasn't done decades ago.
There we go.
For subdivisions to be retaining this water.
I know. Uh, when we go into the next element, which is the circulation, there's a provision in there for beautifying S R eighty-nine corridors through a plan to maintain culverts and gutters and streetscape elements and improve the community aesthetics. That is an A dot thing. We haven't figured out how to crack that nut yet, but we're, we have not given up. I think that that's really important, that's our front door. And that's what people see and understand what this community is. And I've talked to people that lived here before eighty-nine was widened. And their vision of what Chino was at that point is what they think that we should be looking like now. They, they feel like the road coming in took out all of the aesthetics of the trees.
Used to be tree light.
Yes.
That's back when we had water, too.
I understand that, but, but there's also water.
Irrigation district runs along most of eighty-nine, but it's cut off.
So anyways, there's, I don't have anything in my budget this year, I could only handle a couple of things.
Oh, and that's like so many towns throughout the cold country are on, um, you know, main highway going through town. And it's like, it should be easy to address how other states.
What do you wanna look like? What do you wanna show? It's like your parlor in the old days. You know, if you were a kid, you didn't get, get to go in the parlor because I had to stay nice because when company came, that's where they sat.
Your front porch.
That's our front door, eighty-nine.
As it sits now, the town can't mandate anything on eighty-nine as far as landscaping or.
We can, on, on private property, we can, but in A dot property, we cannot.
And A dot has a huge swath that is not maintained well.
They don't, they don't give up rights or anything.
They would happily let us do it if we took over maintenance of the entire street. And we do not have the manpower to do that.
So anyways, we have a couple of ideas, we're not going to share them because we don't need them out yet. But, sorry Stan. But we have a couple of ideas that we're going to try and pursue to see if we can get some kind of an agreement with them. We'll let you know when we get further down that road. I talked to Frank about, uh, develop and adopt a roadway maintenance program. And he said that's part of his pavement management program that he, I think it's in the, I don't think he's working on it yet, I think it's in the budget.
It's like kind of in progress, but he's, he's got more money.
He's got too many things going on. So anyways, I put a dot next to it because he told me that that was going on, that's also in the general plan. Prioritizing the road maintenance is also a part of that. I asked him about a facilities master plan, which, uh, looks at all of the public buildings and all of the facilities providing service to residents. If he had that in the works, he does not. But he's got ten years to get one. So.
How would you like to fight that fight with no money?
Awful.
No money and nobody willing to get him any money and listen to everybody complaining about it.
Every day, he gets complaints, every single day.
Oh, yeah, sure. And if people that, we voted on it in two thousand and nineteen and the town turned it down.
He has said that a number of times.
Just put it on the answering machine.
Yeah, and, and sooner or later, someone will come in and say, he's not listening to me.
So, in that integrated water master plan is also a water sewer, stormwater master plans that he's working on. So that is in the works. So when you look at this whole, I mean, it's a huge list of things. We've already started working on a lot of them. And we're only, you know, like six, eight months into it. So I reached back.
Good direction now.
I reached back to our consultant and she was amazed that we were moving so quickly with so many things.
So many communities just get this adopted and shelved.
And they walk away. And you can't do that. So the other thing that the, um, Community Services Director put in her budget was a master plan for Old Home Manor. Cause obviously, the business park thing isn't really working. So we're going to focus, like the plan says, on recreation.
Gotta have a plan.
That's right, we'll have a plan.
It's not gonna be the urban mecca that it was previously.
Right, a town, of maybe a town hall where we can all be under the same roof, which would make us super efficient. To be able to walk down the hall and talk to somebody as opposed to get in your car, get on the road, drive down here, park.
Yeah, but from the private citizen standpoint, that's good that the government can't communicate too well.
No, it's not.
Keeps them under control.
If we're not under control, we're inefficient. So, so anyways, that is also going on. So I just wanted to update that with you guys. And if any of you brought your books and you don't have the tabs like this, give it back to me and I will make sure you have all the extra pages put in there. And then next time we talk about the general plan, you could flip to it and you'll have all the pages that you need, okay? And we have one more thing tonight.
Yes, don't be brief.
Dark sky.
Dark sky.
Do you want me to run it or how do you want to do it?
It's still moving forward.
I can, people have, uh. Yeah, and I put, um, attachments.
And you'll need to face us when you talk.
And then I did print out.
I'll hand them out, that's fine.
Thank you.
Unless some guys ask what needs to be changed in the code, so Jessica went through where she looked at the code.
Page two.
It's good, it's good, right.
And she's going, she's giving us eight points, eight main points that she's gonna share with us today.
Yeah, so I'll try to be as brief, um, we already, um, I don't know, why did you come up with that? That's okay, cause you have to print out. So I'm not gonna go through everything, um, but I'm going to, um, just kind of recap last time we talked about light pollution, what is light pollution? Uh, what are the impacts on, on the ecology, our local ecology, the cultural impacts? And, uh, safety, so we, we touched on a couple of, um, on a couple of, uh, main topics. So after looking at, uh, the code and, uh, we did also a code comparison with other towns in the Yavapai County, um, area. And, um, did some language updates and also some, uh, some points here for your consideration. Um, so, I wanted to bring this up just to, just to recap. So what you had in your packet is the Responsible Outdoor Lighting Handout. Um, if anyone needs any extras, let me know, it's, it's in your packet, but I did bring extras. So that's, uh, what it piggybacks on. And, uh, this, well, actually yours is the, uh, the Roll-in Manifesto that you have in your packet is, is, um, what it piggybacks on. Um, it discusses the lighting fixtures that are recommended, um, and links you to those. Um, again, this, uh, everything that we've gathered is from our research, looking at other jurisdictions and also the, um, uh, and also the, um, International Dark Sky Association Best Management Practices. Okay, come on. Um, so first, uh, just updating some of the intent and purpose. Um, this is to encourage and afford every citizen, flexibility to engage in pursuit of, in, in the pursuit of safe, inexpensive lighting practices, um, without being impeded upon or, or impeding upon other citizens desiring a more pristine nighttime environment, uh, free from light pollution, glare, light trespass, waste and clutter, um, while maintaining nighttime safety, utility, security, productivity, and curtailed degradation of the nighttime visual, uh, environment. Um, some of the changes in the applicability would be, uh, to eliminate the low thresholds and have all lighting come into compliance, um, at a, when, when the date comes.
Over time.
Over time. The other suggestion was looking at the preferred, preferred source that is in our code is a little outdated. Um, though it is, uh, dark sky friendly, um, L E D technology is, um, more preferred and more utilized, more accessible. Um, so you will notice, um, in the following pages that will be crossed off the table that would be updated because those, some of those, uh, uh, types, um, are not efficient or not applicable to our times. Um, the other thing was to look at the, um, lighting temperatures and recommendations on that.
You wanna click the page so we're on the same page?
Yes, sorry about that.
Thank you.
So this is the page we are on, we're looking at today, or right now. And, um, uh, also adding some wording to all lighting fixtures, uh, not to encroach on public streets or private properties. Um, and we already have some language in here that is geared towards new commercial development and having their, their, um, lighting certified, uh, before they get final for their project. Putting some height restrictions as well on parking lights. Right now, we don't have any, um, limitations on heights, right, it's only whatever the district is. Um, and so putting some height limitations and also looking at the surrounding zones and how it impacts, uh, that would kind of dictate the heights of, uh, the poles and where the fixtures are mounted on, uh, buildings.
And so that reduces that night glare?
Yes, so the, the purpose of that is if there is, uh, residential districts that are surrounding a, a potential development in a commercial area, um, that, that light is not going to be encroaching into the, into other developments. And that you can't see it from far away, so, um.
The playground field lights.
That one is going to be a little bit, uh, we'll, I, I'll look more into that one. Uh, more technology could be applied for that, um, sensors and things of that nature. So I'm gonna, uh, just really briefly go through the bullet points. And so, uh, I, I've kind of briefly touched on this, we're just going to eliminate that table since, um, a lot of those fixture types are outdated.
Thought it was a separate attachment that you had. There are eight bullet points.
Oh, yes, the eight bullet points. Main points. Okay, here we go. So everything we kind of briefed through and from our discussion last, uh, last session, uh, these are some of the recommendations for a small town, uh, that wants to maintain their rural feel there. Um, and, uh, so the use of shielded light fixtures with thoughtful design, uh, so that would ensure that all outdoor lighting fixtures are properly shielded and incorporate thoughtful design elements to direct light downward, minimize, minimize light spillage and consider fixtures with decorative elements that complement the town's aesthetic, uh, aesthetic while adhering to the dark sky principles. Um, this is more geared towards also the, uh, eighty-nine corridor and, uh, really focusing, um, on, on the aesthetics on that. And, and their, and their fixture type choices. Um, selecting warmer temperatures, uh, I D, I D A does, uh, International Dark Sky does recommend under three thousand. That's something that could be discussed, uh, depending.
I think it needs to be about four, cause that's, it's got enough blue in it so that you can actually tell what color you're looking at outside, and I think that's important.
And I think that's something that could be also, um, alleviated with L E D lighting. Um, because it, the, the new technology allows you to modify that. Um, so if for some reason there, we look at, uh, a full assessment later on and see that maybe there's some seasons or certain areas where there's, um, uh, migration or, or, um, environmental, uh, consideration factors that we would look at that we would be able to, um, uh, really re, help them to regulate the, uh, the lighting intensity and the warmth and the color. So, um, I, luckily, the technology these days with signage and lighting, it, that can be altered. So it doesn't have to be like a fixed, um, a fixed number.
I know, like Glendale used to have orange lights.
Yeah, low.
You got nauseous driving through town.
Well, and, and go out to a parking lot and try to figure out where, where your car is.
Drive around flag stuff right now and experience the same thing.
Yeah. It's not safe.
And that's part of why the, the low pressure, um, uh, fixtures were suggested to be, to be replaced with L E D.
It's shielded and down facing, that is the biggest.
That's, that's gonna be the big push.
Pollution the most.
That's the big push.
Yeah, so if you've got it shielded and down facing, then the color's not as important.
Right.
Mm-hmm, and, and seeing that the light i- is, is maintained below the horizontal plane, we can, yes.
If you can see the light bulb, then you're not shielding it properly.
And there's some methods for, uh, fixtures that are not shielded that, um, uh, I didn't include here, it just goes more in depth, that, um, instead of retrofitting all the fixtures, that there's some kind of painting, some kind of shielding that you can put on top that would be, um, economical. And, um, some potential rebate programs that the state offers for, for those types of retrofits.
So the goal right now is not to force residences to retrofit.
Yes.
Yeah, especially like.
Unless there's a complaint about light.
It's an, uh, yeah.
Cause people that have like flag poles, you have to, if you leave the flag up, you have to have the light on. But if you put a cover over it so the light doesn't go out, it goes down.
Honestly, I've actually looked into it, just, so I have carriage light type lights. And I have a pretty large front house, so I've got five carriage lights, two in my garages and my front porch. And my neighbor put in, um, the barn style, you know, the, the loop with the down facing. So, which you can't see the bulb at all. And it actually lights up the house. If you stand out in front of my house, it kind of, and I have the three thousand, pretty, pretty dim bulbs. But you actually can't see the house as well than with the down facing. But I looked into retrofit and there's really no choices.
Not the same thing.
The barn style or ultra-modern. You know, they're super contemporary, which wouldn't go with my house at all. And I specifically searched for dark sky friendly fixtures, you know, and there's just no choice.
I'm gonna have to send you a link because there's quite a lot. Okay.
They're not cheap either.
No, 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 that's why we're not gonna force retrofit to houses. If somebody wants to retrofit, then we'll have the ability to show them where they can go, what, what they can do.
But I would like it just, it actually even for safety reasons, the downlight actually lights up your property better, it doesn't bleed out, but you can actually see the front of the house better.
That's nice. Okay, Jessica.
Yes, and I will send you some links, cause there's, uh, there's some that are not dark sky certified, but, um, the International, um, I believe it's Engineering, um, Association. They have, um, comparable fixtures that would still meet the intent of dark sky. Implementing motion sensors and timers, installing motion sensors and timers to control lighting usage and ensuring that lights are only active when needed and reducing unnecessary light pollution during peak hours. Um, so in your, in some of the, um, red lines that you'll see, um, signage, uh, on timers to be off, uh, by when they close or before ten, um, that was a recommendation. Uh, promoting community education, um, educating residents, businesses, local authorities about the importance of light sky or dark sky lighting practices and how they can contribute to preserving the night, uh, nighttime environment. Um, surprisingly, I've had quite a lot of, um, business owners come in and say, you know, I, I do wanna retrofit and, um, how can I, how can I do this? And so I've sent them those links to certified dark sky fixtures as well as, uh, some comparable, um, comparable fixtures. Um, regulating outdoor lighting, implementing lighting ordinances, uh, and guidelines. So it's part of that, um, placement and intensity of outdoor lighting fixtures. Um, part of that will also, uh, be more revealed during a, a full assessment later on of the town. Uh, dark sky friendly alternatives, explore dark sky friendly lighting options, L E D fixtures that we talked about, um, minimizing pollution while still providing adequate illumination for safety and security. And encourage retrofits and upgrades, encourage or mandate property owners to retrofit existing outdoor lighting fixtures with dark sky compliant alternatives or to upgrade to energy efficient and properly shielded fixtures when feasible. Oh, and by implementing these recommendations, small rural towns, uh, like Chino Valley can minimize light pollution, preserve the natural nighttime environment and promote responsible outdoor lighting practices for the benefit of the residents, wildlife and astrotourism for future generations.
Okay, but you had a suggestion for, since we now have a new state park.
Yes.
Within the town boundaries, so.
Yes. Thank you, um, I, I've been looking into how we can become dark sky certified and, um, I looked at some of the criteria, we don't quite meet that criteria for the whole entire town. Uh, but now with, with the new. Uh, but now with, with the new Del Rio State Park, that, that's a potential. And I've looked at the criteria and I think there's a high potential that we could qualify for that. Um, and then, uh, probably setting some, uh, parameters, uh, for, uh, any kind of, uh, new development or existing development in the area so that they can come into, uh, compliance, um, so that we can reach that goal. Uh, so I'm looking over at that criteria. I'm hoping that, um, in, in, in the very near future, we can go ahead and, um, apply for that. And we'll bring that to you at another time. So that's exciting news.
Yeah.
Does Perkins forty-four got streetlights?
No.
They do have house lights.
Yes.
No issue. Should that general speed, there's no, what do they, like, you know, street light. Correct. Eighty-nine corridor, obviously.
So that concludes my presentation. Um, there is a slew of information, um, for, uh, best management practices that I, I think would be a benefit to, um, possibly adopt. And that's something that we'll, we'll bring up in, in the near future as well.
All right. Thank you very much. Nobody's done a lot of homework for us. I think our residents will be excited about that.
And that might be something to, if we get dark sky out at Del Rio, to try to get some sort of little planetarian thing to come out there from, Emery Riddle.
Certainly, watching the sky tourism kind of stuff.
Yeah, cause Emery Riddle's down there by grocery stores and everything. If they might be interested to come out and put something out at Del Rio's.
Oh, yeah, there's quite a lot of, um, uh, stargazing groups and astrologers and, uh, that do come to Chino. I'm sorry, astronomers. Not, not astrology, I'm sorry. Not, not looking at your zodiac signs. There are actually some out there celestial, you know, gazing groups that do actually focus on that as well. Um, so Chino does have, um, a lot of interest from those types of groups.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, before we go to adjourn, is there any other things that anybody has comments on that we can, we can, concerns about stuff that we talked about tonight?
Can I ask you, uh, whatever happened to the soccer field on the south end of town? Not going to go through or?
That would be something we can talk at our next. Don't really have a place for that on the agenda. We can tell you after the meeting individually.
Okay.
Regarding the dark sky ordinance, the, uh, plant farm at the end of the town, if they, are they gonna comply? Yeah, are they gonna comply with covering that top? Cause I noticed at night it's always exposed.
Yes, um, I believe they, they probably have already been spoken to from our code enforcement.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, they, they are aware and they have the shielding to do that. So we're just, we need to have them.
Just have to encourage them.
Encourage them a little bit, yes. Encourage is a good word. Um, so they are aware that they are on the radar quite a lot.
All of the marijuana farms in town are supposed to have those.
Yes.
Correct.
Code enforcement is working on making them comply.
Well, we'll be able to hit them a lot heavier once we get the code updated.
We didn't cover dogs and cats.
Those are domestic animals.
Yeah, since we're only covering non-domestic right now. Don't really wanna touch that.
Be a whole different crowd than you.
And if, if we have, uh, bowls.
It's okay. They didn't bring it up here.
All I'm saying is that Councilman Best, when I first moved here, Councilman Best tried to have it where if you had, I think it was eight dogs, you were a kennel. What I'm saying, are we gonna regulate?
Not, not with this.
Not on our radar.
You wanna open that box?
The dog community will definitely be overflowing.
We will all turn in our resident.
We don't have an issue, we're not gonna kick that hornet's ass.
Let's just say that.
The Chino Valley canine club.
All in favor?
You said second. It's a video. Thank you.
Yeah, the.
Thank you guys, especially for the discussions.
The fastest growing.
Yeah, thank you.
The fastest growing AKC affiliated club is our Chino Valley canine club.
There you go.